Thank you. Good evening and welcome to this special board meeting for the Akron Public Schools Board of Education for Monday, August 31st, 2020. Roll call, please.
Dr. Akbar?
Here.
Mr. Alexander?
President.
Ms. Autry?
Present.
Mr. Bravo?
Here.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Here.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if everyone could mute their microphones and join me then in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. All right. And thank you all for taking time out of your evening for this special meeting. As you know, we're here to continue our discussion on athletics and in-person extracurriculars. And there are three resolutions in front of you this evening, two of which you have seen before, and the additional one, which is in regard to our marching bands. And so at this point, I would like to turn it over to the superintendent. And then, you know, once we have a discussion on this, I then then we'll open up the floor for a vote on on any of those resolutions and we can take them in order as they're presented. So, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, we did receive, and I know the board members are copied on a letter from one of our band directors, who had some questions regarding athletics and then the potential for having bands, marching bands start back up. They were practicing before we had shut down sports and everything. They would actually follow, for the most part, the same rules that anyone else. I mean, we're only, when we looked at the questions that he listed, my plan is to meet with the other band directors, but some of the really non-negotiables will be, you can only have the band for the home team present. We're not, you know, we're because of the limited time that we'll have, you know, halftime and before and after, they really will be limited, and they'll also have to social distance in the stands. And as they're playing, there's a couple of other safety measures that we'll be putting in place. And of course, you know, making sure that we're following the guidelines that are outlined by the Ohio Department of Health and our Summit County Public Health Department.
Thank you so much. And at this time, I'd like to open it up for comments, questions, and discussion. And I know that someone has already lined up in the chat, so if I don't see you, please put a note in the chat to let me know that you have something to share. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Ms. McKittrick.
Thank you, President Bravo. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to read an excerpt from an email that I got because it says better than I could, very succinctly, my thoughts about reinstating these activities. And it goes, "The recommendation from senior staff to cancel fall sports for 2020 was based on information from the Summit County Public Health Department that frankly hasn't changed much since the middle of July. The APS Board, even those who voted to resume fall sports, had reservations because of those Health Department recommendations and the information coming from the state of Ohio. I'm curious what has changed. It seems that the Summit County Public Health Department continues to hold the same view of fall sports, at least contact sports. I understand the concerns regarding the social and emotional health of the students when they don't have the opportunities that sports and extracurricular activities provide. I also understand that the students are learning firsthand how a representative democracy works. They certainly have learned how to make their voices heard. I even understand the concerns about so many of our students having unstructured time that they that may lead to them becoming the latest victims of the violence that is plaguing the city of Akron this summer. What I don't understand is why we can't manage to make a decision that we know is the better public health choice. Why with that choice, we don't make a point to funnel resources to help the students learn how to handle change, disappointment, and the overwhelming feeling of loss they have when life changes abruptly? It seems to me that we are facilitating the development of young adults who will be completely unprepared to handle the changes and losses that are an unavoidable part of life. In my opinion, we have a golden opportunity to use this crazy time as another teachable moment in which we can help prepare for the students for, as they say, adulting. We are focused on their college and career preparedness but are avoiding an opportunity to prepare them for the grief and disappointment that is a part of life." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKittrick. Mr. Alexander?
Yes, I first want to thank the students, first of all, for speaking up on their own behalf. Thanks to the to the parents, the coaches, the community, and all others who reached out to all of us in concern for sports for our young people. I, as a child advocate, and have been a child advocate for, you know, 30-plus years, my, I've always been told and taught in my training, say, the safety and security of the kids that that you may be serving. And so I think when we're saying that, I think we have to always consider and remember that we are part of a group of individuals who are in charge of the safety and the security of our kids as well. And we try to do that to the best of our ability. Last week, I did ask a question, and I would like to see if any of you or anyone else has heard otherwise, that I asked a question to our health person, and I asked, was it okay for us to go ahead and and start sports? And I believe the answer was that Akron Public Schools have a number of good things in place, but there are still some risks. And so in saying that, I'm still looking for those medical professionals to tell us what we need to do because it hasn't been said yes to completely go ahead with no stipulations to go with that. So in saying that, if I'm if I'm wrong, I'd like someone to tell me and let me know so I can get a better understanding of what what was said. But that was my interpretation when I asked a question. I didn't get a, it was basically a yes or no question. I didn't get yes to that question. So if anyone can help me out, thank you.
Superintendent, or does anyone want to?
In her presentation last week, because we've been working very closely with Summit County Public Health, what she said is the fact that we're not in session and going virtually, you know, we've lowered the risk, there will never be, I think, a point with this virus that we have to learn how to live with, that will, that there will be a zero risk from, you know, the information that I've seen. We have, you know, we could be months away from a vaccine. There's no guarantee that that, you know, with it being so new, that it will actually solve the problem with COVID. But again, you know, in talking with Summit County Public Health, I think some of the issues that her fears were with that October 1st date, where she wanted to see what happens for the districts that were playing sports and then coming back to school or trying to ban sports until, or recommendation, let's say, of not having sports for those districts that were in person. And she did specifically say, you know, the procedures that we outline, following the current guidelines that the governor, Ohio Department of Health have put out, that, you know, from what she saw, we're, you know, it looks like we're meeting those guidelines and we reduce the risk because we don't have in-person school for our students where if there was a problem, it could potentially spread throughout a particular school.
So that I guess that still is not a yes or a no coming from the person. Okay.
I'm not, I'm not sure anyone can say that could answer that as a complete yes or a complete no answer with 100% certainty.
Thank you.
If I could weigh in, Mr. President, on this as well, I think, I think that's, I think that's what's caused quite a bit of consternation, you know, with respect to how this has been interpreted, right? I think that, you know, if you look at a lot of the public opinion, even some of the articles I think I've seen out there, I think it was sort of misconstrued and stated that when we voted, you know, no on sports, I think it was taken, you know, that we were acting in contradiction, if you will, to the Public Health Department. I think that there was this perception, you know, fair or foul, I think there was this perception that the Public Health Department, by issuing guidance on this, was in fact saying it was okay to play sports, you know? And so I think that there was some misinterpretation around that. But I but I would agree with Dr. James, yeah, you know, I mean, at no point on that call did the Public Health Department say no or yes to playing sports. It just it just laid out that they recognized what we're doing from a protocol standpoint, thought we had good protocols in place and and that it would go a long way towards reducing risk. But yeah, I would echo Dr. James's comments. I didn't take away from that that there was, that the Public Health Department was issuing an opinion, one way or the other, on whether or not we should or should not be playing sports, you know? So and I think the other confusing piece about this was, again, I think as Dr. James mentioned to that, the October 1st component, you know, where some people say, well, she said October 1st, but yeah, but she said that assuming that we were going back to school, you know? And so not going back to school sort of changes the calculus on that. So, so, yeah, so those are some of the things, you know, that I know that I've had an opportunity to kind of rethink over the last week. But I've got more comments, but I just want to reply back to Mr. Alexander's original question, so I'll leave it there for now.
Thank you.
Dr. Hall, Dr. Akbar?
Yes, I just really wanted to share that I took the last week to look at more data and look into it to see if there is something I was missing or something that would share with me a different perspective. And unfortunately, all the data that comes back confirms my initial decision and concerns. Right now, Summit County and Akron, 37% of all known cases are of our black people, which, as we know, is more than twice the amount of black people who live in Summit County. We also know that with my conversation with Donna Skoda and other staff members in the Summit County Public Health on Friday, 49.3% of all hospitalizations and serious diagnoses of complications from this virus are African-American, as well as there being a need for 50% or lower of all new infections to be from community spread. We are continuously over that mark. And so she also said in the meeting that she came to last week, and she being the the Public Health Commissioner, Donna Skoda, said the kids will get sick, not if, but when. But the one thing that I'm concerned about, not just the kids, because we could talk about the low risk for the kids, but kids live with people, and they live with this high vulnerable rate of individuals that I mentioned earlier. And we're seeing that the parents and the grandparents are 49% of all hospitalizations. That's a problem with that community, to be disproportionately impacted. Also, we know that all health concerns are interconnected with social determinants of health. And the fact that they're also at our last meeting, as well as on my conversation Friday, was shared that there is no way to test youth consistently or weekly, for that matter, as well as just the fact that there is a low number of youth tests in the county is problematic. And so I want to end with a snippet of an email from a student that wrote, "Most of us last week after that decision." And it really summarizes my feelings about why we have to take this seriously. And so it briefly says that, "As an athlete, I love playing sports, and I am disappointed that fall sports," or, "Am I disappointed that fall sports are canceled?" Yes, I am. But I also understand why the decision was made. "While I love being with my teammates, running meets, and playing games, I'm more concerned about the health and safety of students, coaches, parents, and fans that will be participating in those events. If fall sports are to continue, COVID cases will rise. We are not going back to school for that very same reason. Also, I'm a learner who has to be engaged in the class for me to get the full effect of the classroom. I learn better when I'm in the classroom and have the teacher teaching in front of me rather than through a screen where they can't get the same comprehension of the material, which is why I'm very disappointed to hear about virtual learning. But I understand, I would like, I'm sorry, if COVID-19 cases go up, the return date for school will keep getting pushed back. I personally am not willing to sacrifice the quality of my education for fall sports, and I'm a big-picture type of person. And in the long run, staying safe and protected from the virus that has affected the entire world is more important to me than going to football games or cross-country meets. And last, as an athlete, yes, I am disappointed sports are canceled, but as a student, I want whatever can be done to get me back in school quicker to be done. And as a person who cares about the health and safety of others, I want whatever can be done to keep the communities, state, and country safe and healthier to be done." And so thank you to the student Madison, who wrote that email. It basically encompasses my thoughts, and I think that all of us should be thinking about what sacrifices can we make in the short term now to make sure that we're all here to enjoy the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Akbar. Anyone else would like to share? Ms. Mansfield?
Thanks, of course. Just as I start to talk, there's a train going through the West Side, so I apologize for that. If it's too loud, I can move inside. Is it okay? Do you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, it sounds fine.
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. Um, so right now, this kind of feels a little like Groundhog's Day. So I kind of want to see if we can move things along just a little bit. I appreciate the superintendent adding band into the mix there. At first, I didn't understand that the reason that we would need to do just the home team in particular is, one of the reasons is that for the football recommendations from the Ohio School Athletic Association, it is a shorter halftime. So there wouldn't really be time to safely social distance and switch over bands. And so a little research on that made me feel a little better about that. It's it's tough because both, so I just want to say this publicly, both schools, of course, would be our schools. So, you know, we do have a home team and a not-home team at every game, but it's a little confusing. So I just want to talk about that just for a moment. You know, I spent a lot of my week last week trying to do exactly what the email that Ms. McKittrick referenced asked us to do. I started looking into how do we move on from this? Because there was a vote taken, and there have been two votes taken. And so in my mind, we needed to move on as a district and as a, as a board. So I started looking into mental health pieces that we have. I talked to a few of our groups that work with our children, our students as they move through mental health issues and started going that direction. I was really surprised when this got put back on the, you know, back together. And I appreciate and respect all my fellow board members. I appreciate the perspective that the three that have spoken have brought. I look forward to hearing what else is coming up. I just feel like we're, we're kind of torturing the public at this point. I mean, if it feels like Groundhog Day to me, I'm certain it feels like that to them as well. We need to be nimble. We need to make decisions. We need to be the deciding body. We need to take action based on guidance and from the experts, whether it's the educational experts, we don't work for the district in that way. They are the educational experts. They're the Akron Public School experts. We bring the perspective of the public, and we're the, we're the bridge between both. What we need to be careful of is that we're not too much either way, right? We're not being dominated by public opinion, nor are we only listening to the advice of the district. That's our job. Our job is to be that. So we need to figure out how to work together to make that happen. I was dismayed at the way this meeting was called, and I'm hoping that we can move on from that and and learn to do that, to be that bridge and to work more nimbly and yet within the guidance of our own policies and procedures so that we can can have a level of of trust in our community as well as trust with each other. So I'm looking forward to that coming up. I know this is, again, an unbelievable time. So I'm chalking a lot of it up to that, but I'm hoping that we can get some of this, get something moving so we're not delaying and costing time and waffling. It feels like we're just, we're, we're kind of lost in the waves, and I'm not sure which way to go next because once I, once I start to move on, like I'm supposed to as as somebody that's part of this board, accepting a board vote and moving on and telling them, look, this is what we're doing because that's how the board voted, I need to know that that's really what's going to happen. So I just feel like I needed to say that out loud. That's probably a lot nicer than I said it in my head all weekend. So that's the tamed-down version. But I do appreciate and respect all of, all of the opinions that have been brought. I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing really why we're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Autry.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to my fellow board members. I am going to be brief, as I usually am. For me, there is nothing that's really changed, other than the opportunity to acknowledge the parents and families. I believe there's been two protests, several petitions. And although we've heard a lot about the statistics, et cetera, I didn't hear a lot of conversation around what our families really want. So I would just like to acknowledge them. And also acknowledge the fact that it is not a bad thing to reconsider things. And come from my PTA background, that is actually probably my natural way of doing things is trying to find that balance between what parents, teachers, families, and community want. So again, for me, I welcome the opportunity to allow all of our students to participate in sports and extracurriculars, including band, you know, under the guidelines that were presented to us and approved by the Summit County Public Health Department. So that's all I'd like to say at this moment.
Thank you, Ms. Autry. Dr. Hall?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. So first, you know, I would just sort of echo what we are feeling, and that is, these are unprecedented times. These are unprecedented times. You know, I think when you're dealing with with these kinds of times, you know, it's important, you know, for not only folks in the community, but also us as colleagues to place even more emphasis on collaboration, collegiality, and sort of mutual respect. And so, so I want to thank Ms. Mansfield for, for her, for her demonstrating that and not sharing what was in her head, I guess, offline, you know? So, you know, secondly, you know, I want to, with that in mind, I think it's important to comment about on how this meeting was called. So, you know, as you all know, you know, there are multiple ways in which a board meeting can be called, right? So, you know, the treasurer can call a board meeting. I believe the president can call a board meeting. And then two or more board members can also call for a special meeting. And so that was what Ms. Autry and I did. We exercised that particular prong, and we called a meeting. So, so I apologize if us sort of following that process, you know, created, you know, some difficulties in comprehension for some of you. That was not, that was certainly not our intent. Our intent was to sort of follow the process to get another meeting up, which is what we did, you know? And I guess the next bucket of commentary would be around, so, you know, Dr. Akbar shared a lot of good data, you know, and it's nothing that 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 I would, you know, I believe in the data that, by the way, that he presented, you know? And I think the community spread piece, I want to say, I also talked to the Public Health Department last week. I think they were saying that they still thought it was 90% of new cases was due, was due to community spread, which is way above what it should be, which is, you know, again, the benchmark being 50% or below, which is cause for concern. There are some testing issues as well, you know? So there are some concerns about being able to get tests provided, you know, in a timely way. So there's certainly cause for concern, and I think, so I, so I think where this board is united, and this is sort of my take on it, is that regardless of which way people vote on athletics, I think we're all united in that we are concerned and we care about our students and our families. And we're taking this very seriously, which is why we're doing, yet it demonstrates that. You know, I think, I think moreover, you know, like Ms. Mansfield, I mean, I also had conversations with people with mental health PhDs in the last week and got a lot of feedback that that did influence sort of my thought process. And I think it's important to, for those in the public who are watching as well, I think it's important to sort of differentiate. You know, we're talking about, you know, 800 kids, not 20,000. So I think that's one different, now, again, that may not be enough to persuade somebody one way or the other, but I'm just putting out there sort of concrete sort of facts, if you will, that distinguish, in my mind, help to distinguish the two instances. One, there's 800 kids versus 20,000, spread across six high schools and a plethora of teams. So it's not 800 kids who are always together all the time. You know, I think the other thing that should be said out loud here is, you know, I know that there were sort of graphics ever shared that talked about how Akron was the only district in the county that didn't, that wasn't having sports. I think, to be fair, that's not an apples-to-apples comparison. I think those, you know, those who just have one high school to worry about, you know, where we've got, you know, multiple high schools obviously to be worried about. So I don't think that's a fair comparison either. So I think it's important to say that. And then, you know, I would echo Ms. Autry's points around, you know, trying to, you know, we are community elected board members, and when you get that kind of response to one of our decisions, I think that we would have been doing them a disservice to not have another meeting in a timely way to have another conversation about it and looking at the response we got to the last. It's not, it's not very often that we get petitions with between 2,000 and 4,000 synergies on them, asking or advocating for a certain position. So I think, you know, regardless of whether or not, whether or not people vote one way or the other, I think this was, this was important to do this because it shows that as community elected board members that we are listening and willing to take up, you know, the mantle one more time yet again because that's what they asked us to do. And so while I echo some of the earlier sentiments that this may feel like a torturous process to them, I would argue that, that those folks out there that were protesting, I would argue that while they may feel they've been tortured thus far, they are happy we're having this meeting tonight to talk about this again, you know? And so, and then, you know, then last but not least, you know, I think it's, you know, this was not easy, you know, for me, you know, in thinking about this, you know, you know, you get into sort of ethical and kind of moral questions around when is it appropriate and not appropriate to substitute your judgment for that of parents, you know? So it's, it's, so that's a challenge, that's a challenging question to answer as well. It's a balancing act, you know? There will be times, I suspect, where, where, you know, we may get, you know, community feels one way and we don't change or we don't talk about, we're taking something up again. But I feel like this because we are dealing with unprecedented times, that this was a situation that warranted us trying to be a little more flexible and considerate. So, and last but not least, you know, I have, let me just say aloud again, last but not least, that I have a ton of respect, my board colleagues, Dr. Akbar, Ms. McKittrick, Mr. Alexander, who've already weighed in, Ms. Autry as well, you know? And so, you know, I think it's, I think it's important to say that and that regardless of how these resolutions go one way or the other, for me, that's not going to change, you know? And so, so having said that, you know, I will, I will see the floor back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. Anyone else? Thank you, Dr. Hall. Anyone else? Have any other discussion or any follow up? Okay. Hearing none, then we do have three resolutions that are before you. They're in section three, 3.1, 3.2 and 3.3. Section, resolution 3.1 is the authorization for the return of full non-contact sports. So at this point, if there is nothing else that anyone would like to say generally, then we'll entertain any motions for.
Patrick, procedural question. I'm sorry, Mr. Bravo, procedural question. Since there is a, since it is wrapped into consent agenda, can it not be all voted at once?
I asked that question earlier. Because they were presented previously as separate resolutions, it would be better at this point if they were made separate. And we do have the third resolution for marching bands, so.
Thanks. Just needed that very, that clarification. I'll make a motion for the first, whichever one is listed first. I.
The return of full non-contact.
Non-contact. I'll go ahead and make that motion since I'm already talking.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Mansfield, a second from Ms. Autry. Any final comments, questions or discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call, please.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
No.
Dr. Akbar?
No.
Mr. Alexander?
No.
Motion passes.
And for section 3.2, this will be for the resolution authorizing the return of fall contact sports. Will entertain a motion?
Some, some second.
Thank you. We have a motion for Ms. Autry, a second for Ms. Mansfield. Any final comments, questions or discussion on this resolution? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call, please.
Dr. Hall?
Yes, I.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Almost threw there, threw me there, Dr. Hall. Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
No.
Dr. Akbar?
No.
Mr. Alexander?
No.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And finally, our third resolution authorizing the return of high school marching bands. We'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, before we do, I I just have a question about that before we proceed on that last one.
Sure.
With respect to bands, you know, I I guess I'm thinking about, so how, and I see some clarity in this, so they're not back in school, obviously. So are all their practices, because I, because I'm imagining, you know, a bunch of kids in close quarters, whether it's, you know, band or or even choir, I guess for that matter, whether indoors, skon, kind of singing or blowing into the instruments, and, you know, that's, that's, that's a little different stories. I just need to get some clarity around on that.
Our plan would be to have those practices outside, you know, at each of their buildings, which they typically do in the summer as well.
So so basically, then, so based, I guess, my question is, so at at no point would we have our choirs, bands, I'm sorry, choirs, a class. Thank you, Ms. Mansfield. You're right about that. So at no point would we would we have our our marching band, for example. They would never be in a, in a closed end space, you know, that, you know, I guess rehearsing.
I can't say because in, like, each of the bands, so they'll have, like, the brass section, you know, the woodwinds and then the percussion. So those are some things that we'll work with Summit County Public Health because we have had discussions as we looked at our return to school plans on how we would handle music. Chores would have a different, you know, for those, I think there was maybe up to nine feet or 12 feet separation. So we'll work with Summit County Public Health on specific guidelines for each of those. We're bringing all the band directors together. But in the meantime, just for them to get back, you know, to some practice, we want those outside until we hear otherwise from Summit County Public Health.
And do we know when we expect to hear from Summit County Public Health? Is it a couple of days, a couple of weeks?
We, no, we've already had some, I know Mrs. Folk has had some conversations with Summit County Public Health and we are going to be bringing those band directors together to have further conversations. But they're not going to be, they're not going to be all squeezed into one room and have, you know, all of that air and breathing happening.
Okay, Roger that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Akbar.
Yes, so I have a, I I have two questions. One, I'm wondering why band is pulled out specifically? And why not just include all extracurricular activities?
Most of our, the majority of our extracurricular activities actually happen after school starts. Band, marching band in particular, because we have, like, pep bands, but that happens in the winter during basketball season most of the time. But marching band, they were practicing in the summer before we canceled sports. So they really need to get the rest of their practices in, you know, learning their music and what have you. And they, even with the governor's report out about sports, talked about marching bands as part of the whole football season. So we are ramping it back where we're just having the home team, you know, do their, you know, show both before, during the short halftime and after the games. And they'll sit in the stands, you know, being properly distanced from each other. But they're really the only one that actually has practices over the summer because they're, they follow right along with football season.
Can I throw in here too that we do give PE credit for band? It is, it it is a physical activity. It, sorry, throwing my former band member slash band mom hat on too with one of my sons marched with Mr. James's son. So, you know, it it is an outdoor activity. It is synonymous with football in the, in the the fall season. And all of their other competitions have been canceled. Our bands do compete on a marching level outside of the district, but those have all been canceled statewide. So this, this would be their opportunity to use all that they'd been doing over the summer still as well. Cheer was in there as well because that's considered a sport and they do get PE credit. You also letter for band and you letter for cheerleading. So those are just, just throwing those in there.
Okay, so my next question has to do with thinking through band for, like, mouthpieces and reads. Are those items still shared by students? And if, if so, what, how are they going to work that, work around, around that? Because I'm assuming that may mean we would have an increased cost for purchasing those items?
To my knowledge, all of the reads and the mouthpieces are individual per student. Even when I played in band, I never shared them. And I'm pretty sure that that is one of the items that's a strict no with Summit County Public Health. And I'll let Mrs. Folk address that.
Good evening. Yes, that is correct. They are all individual to the student. And when the students get their instruments, they have very specific criteria to prepare the instrument, including their reads or their mouthpieces. There is very specific criteria to collect the spittle that comes out of especially horns. And there's very specific criteria to put those items back together for storage prior to either taking them home or storing them at the school. So those instructions were part of the plan we put together for the summer, created practices that were in effect until the board voted to stop all extracurricular activities, including sports.
Thank you, Ms. Folk. And I know when I was in band, we did share those items, which is unsanitary, but that's what happened. I just want to make sure we're not living in those times anymore.
We also do require the students to be fully masked. They are only allowed to enter the building by actual sections so that truly limits the number of students in these areas that are used. And they all have to require the six feet of social distancing under supervision of the band leaders and the directors.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question has to do with the other extracurricular activities. We put band out specifically because it's treated somewhat like a sport. So I understand that. But I guess what, one of some of the questions that I've received are about, also about extracurricular activities. And so if we're voting for contact sports and non-contact sports, which I recall, that also meant that we weren't doing any of those other extracurricular activities, so in person. So would this vote for bands in some way include those activities?
No, this is specifically for band. Staff is reviewing all of our other clubs and other extracurricular activities because some of those can be done virtually. We're really honing in on which ones happen in person. The majority of those actually would happen once school started. And so we'll be coming back with some information to the board regarding that. This one only deals with marching band.
Okay, thank you very, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions on the marching band resolution? Not will entertain a motion?
I made a motion early, but I think it got missed, so I'll remake that motion.
Second.
Good, thank you. Ms. Mansfield and Dr. Hall, yeah, I did, I did hear that earlier. Thank you for clarifying. Any other final comments, questions or concerns on this last resolution? Hearing and seeing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
No.
Dr. Akbar?
No.
Mr. Alexander?
No.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much. And just before we recess into executive session, I just have some final comments that I wanted to share. And I do appreciate that we all got back together to have the discussion. And obviously, the community has seen that this hasn't been an easy decision for any, anyone involved. And I would say that not only goes for our board members, it probably goes for our students and families as well. It goes for our staff. It goes for the coaches. And we've heard from so many of you and we appreciate you reaching out. I think as you heard tonight, and not only did you hear tonight, but you heard from our Summit County Public Health Commissioner at a recent meeting, there will be risks. There is no way for us to completely eliminate any of the risks associated with the activities that we approved tonight. There, there will be risks. There will be student athletes who become sick. There may be family members that also become sick and test positive for COVID-19. And as our Public Health Commissioner stated, the most important part about this decision, should we decide to move forward, which we have, is going to be our ability to know when enough is enough and when to stop athletics and other in-person extracurricular activities. We're going to have to be monitoring this closely as a coaching staff. Our student athletes and our parents are going to have to monitor this themselves as well. Our coaches, our faculty and our staff, and certainly this board. And we're going to have to know when to say enough is enough and when it's time to stop athletics and in-person extracurriculars if if the current circumstances warrant it. And so just as the votes that got us here tonight are not set in stone, neither are the votes that we made tonight. And we're going to have to be flexible and continue to monitor the situation. So we thank all of you for your input and your feedback, and we certainly thank the board for the healthy conversation around these areas. With, with that, I do see a couple of additional comments. Ms. Autry and then Dr. Hall?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was trying to catch you before you made your final comments. You know, one thing that I would like to say, because I've spoken with a lot of folks as well, and 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 there's some commentary that indicates that maybe we value sports and extracurriculars over education. And I just need to reiterate that that is not the case. And that there are some students who who rely more heavily on sports than others. And also, I would like to challenge anyone on this call and out in the community to look in the mirror and ask ourselves, you know, why are we judging some of these young people when we live in a country that spends millions and millions of dollars around Super Bowl and March Madness and many other things? And then we are confused as to why students and young people have such a high regard for sports. So those things just don't kind of jive with me. I would like us to acknowledge the passion behind the love of sports and extracurriculars. And hopefully, moving forward, we can find a way to harness that passion so that we can continue to make education, you know, a great experience for all students, no matter, you know, what their participation is in sports or extracurriculars is or is not. You know, again, it's never for me been about the importance of sports because I understand it. Students have to maintain a certain GPA to be a part of a sports team. So that's why it's valuable in my eyes that we consider it to be equally is valuable as education. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Autry. Dr. Hall and then Dr. Akbar.
Yeah, right. Thanks, Mr. President. Appreciate it. Yeah, yeah, I was trying to catch you before you got to your comments too, so my apologies. So first, quick housekeeping item. I know when I was saying earlier about respecting my colleagues on this board, I was kind of naming each of you. I didn't name Mrs. Mansfield. So let me just be very clear. That was not a purposeful omission. I have a lot of, great respect for Ms. Mansfield as well. So I just want to make sure I, that we get that said.
I didn't think it that way, Dr. Hall. Thank you.
No, I know you didn't. I know you didn't. No, 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 I know, I know you didn't. No, 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 I, I just want to make sure that I said that on the record because again, you know,
Thank you. I appreciate.
Folks can misinterpret things like, well, he didn't say Ms. Mansfield. What does that mean? So no, I mean, so I want to make sure I said that on the record as well. And then, secondly, you know, you know, I, you know, I want to, I want to throw the gauntlet down to the folks in the community that are watching and paying attention to this. There's a lot of passion, to use Ms. Autry's language, a lot of passion that went into supporting the petitions around choice for athletics. And I just want to say, moving forward, I would hope that we, that we would see, you know, that same passion translate or manifest itself into things other than sports for APS as we move forward. So again, sports is fantastic. I know, you know, we all value it. But again, that passion, I I hope to see that kind of passion exuded moving forward in support of other APS initiatives. So and then I I will leave it there, Mr. President. Back to, back to, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Akbar.
Thank you, Dr. Akbar.
Yes, I just wanted to come out and say this because I did get an email and even saw some comments about being Dr. No. And I just want to say that my no is not, you know, I'm not here just to say no. That's absolutely not my purpose. However, I think that when it comes to equity, that it is expertise that I have and I can't ignore that expertise and layer that on top of every decision that we make because it's important. Because otherwise, students are left behind or forgotten about or not included in the decision-making process if we don't do that. The other thing that I'll say is that I love. Yes, I just wanted to come out and say this, because I did get an email and even saw some comments about being Dr. No, and I just want to say that my no is not, you know, I'm not here just to say no. That's absolutely not my purpose. However, I think that when it comes to equity, that it is expertise that I have, and I can't ignore that expertise and layer that on top of every decision that we make, because it's important, because otherwise, students are left behind or forgotten about or not included in the decision-making process if we don't do that. The other thing that I'll say is that I love every one of our students and their family members, and my no vote is out of love for each and every one of you, and knowing that life is precious, not dispensable, and I value it so much that I don't want to have anything happen. I don't, I don't think it's acceptable that the public health commissioner can say that kids will get sick and still think that that it's okay to vote yes, because some kids, it's okay for some kids to get sick or some family members to get sick. Personally, I do not think that's okay. I do not denigrate or disparage anyone for their vote, nor do I denigrate or disparage any parent or family member or, or young person for their passion and energy around wanting sports and athletics. I get it, understand it. I won't say anything negative about it or try to tell you what to do, but the one thing I will say is I just want you to know where I'm coming from, and I take your life and the life of your family members very seriously, and that is not a repudiation of anyone else, or their vote. It's just a kind of a bracketing of how I came to my decision.
Thank you, Dr. Akbar. Ms. Mansfield?
I just want to make that abundantly clear. I think I tried to say it the first time. I may disagree with decisions that are made on this board, but I will always get behind not only the decision when it's made, but also my fellow board members. There's no way that I'm going to, you know, I, even if we disagree on a decision, it's not that I disagree with them as human beings or disagree with them. Anybody who's out there saying stuff like that needs to stop. It's not fair. There's no one that's on this board that's here for anything other than to serve this community, so, and even if we disagree on ways that that's going to happen on a particular vote, it doesn't mean that we, that's not our passion. So I will defend Dr. Akbar as not the voice of no. I was sharing things by him this very day about his, one of his resolutions that he helped us write. So, you know, we can, we can all disagree on a particular issue, and we can disagree passionately, but it, it doesn't have anything to do with how much we respect each other or the superintendent when he makes a resolution. I, I just feel like we have to make that clear, because we will have each other's back.
Thank you for saying that, Ms. Mansfield. I'd like to echo that as well, Dr. Akbar. These types of issues bring out the passion in everyone, and sometimes that's going to fall on both sides, but I think it's important, as Ms. Mansfield said, as you've alluded to, I mean, when we make a decision, we come together, we get behind it, we support it, and we may always, we may disagree, but we are, we are never disagreeable, not with each other and not with the community, and we certainly hope that they are not disagreeable with us as well and respect everybody's opinions. And we all represent various parts of the community, and there are parts of this community that don't agree with the decision tonight, and so it's fair that we all, that we all get to voice our opinions and vote our conscience and feel good about that. So thank you. With that, there is a need to recess into executive session tonight pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G1, to consider the appointment, employment, promotion, or compensation of a public employee or official of the district. So at this point, I would entertain a motion for brief recess.
So.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. McKittrick, a second by Dr. Hall. Roll call please.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
I.
Thank you so much, and for the public joining us, we will return briefly after executive session to adjourn the meeting. Thank you again for being with us, and we'll see everyone. If you could please log out of this meeting and join us in executive. Good evening, and thank you if you are joining us again. This is, we have just returned from executive session. This is the special board meeting for the Akron Public Schools Board of Education for Monday, August 31, 2020, and it is 6:32 PM that we are returning to regular session. There is no action to take following our executive session, but I would like to open it up to the board for any unfinished or new business. Dr. Akbar?
Yes, I just, I have two questions. I just wanted to put it out there and see if there's an answer for it. One question is about temperature, temperature checks at practices, if those will occur, and the other one is if there's somewhere online that the, that the requirements or guidelines for sports will be posted for review.
Yeah, I'll work with Mr. Vassalati to get those posted, and I know that Deborah Folk, I think all of our buildings have the touchless thermometers or the ones you, you know, for the forehead, which will take the temperature, and if I'm not mistaken, even the Ohio High School Athletic Association has a form that assesses the health of each athlete that has to be taken on a daily basis.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Autry.
Yes, actually, I neglected to say previously, I really just wanted to thank Mr. Vassalati and his team and committee for just everything that they've done, putting the guidelines together and trying to explain everything for us, and just, I acknowledge that their commitment to our students is a great one, and I just want to thank them for the work that they're doing and that they're going to continue to do, and just let them know that I do have the confidence in them to take this plan and take forward safely. Thank you.
Thank you for saying that, Ms. Autry. Dr. Hall?
Yeah, actually, similar comments to Ms. Autry. She's been in my head quite a bit the last couple of days, so get out of there, Ms. Autry, get out of there. But I was going to say, yeah, echo that. And also, too, you know, in, in the event, you know, and I know that we all hope this doesn't happen, but in the event that, you know, we have to reconsider based upon, you know, students getting sick, that doesn't mean that Mr. Vassalati's plan failed, right? I mean, so I just want to make sure that that's made clear, that, that no one is going to be placing blame upon him, he or his team, you know, you know, if in the event, you know, things slide in the other direction. So again, you know, I would echo Ms. Autry's comments, that his, his team and his team's contributions are appreciated and valued. I had, I too got a, got a, got a text question, completely unrelated to anything that we talked tonight, but it was about the online learning component. I got a question asking if we were going to record the lectures, because I know that some parents have reached out and with concerns about being able to, you know, with them working multiple jobs, you know, not being able to ensure, assure that their student was going to be in front of the computer at, you know, scheduled at set times every single day. There was some, there was some apprehension about that, so I wanted to make sure I asked that question before, before we signed off today.
Sure, I'll ask Dr. McWilliams Woods to address that, because that did come up during one of our staff meetings.
Yeah, we, we have talked through processes to be able to record lectures, but also maintain the student privacy issues, that we need to balance those two. So we're putting out general expectations for staff this week. It won't be taping the entire class session with all of the student faces and all their comments and questions all being posted, but there will be a version of some, we're trying to figure out exactly how to do that, where we're capturing the teachers and the instructional piece without putting all of the students' faces and their comments and the discussion out there as well. So by Wednesday, we'll have guidance out to our faculty on how that'll work.
Fantastic. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Question, anyone else? If not, I just want to say again, seriously, personally, thank you all for the conversation. I know this has been tough. It's been a learning experience for all of us, myself included, just how to navigate something that's so personal and felt so strongly by so many people, including the folks on this board. So thank you for great conversation, for being respectful, for allowing everyone the chance to share. I just, I appreciate it. Thank you so much. With that, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. Let me write this down. And Ms. McKittrick first, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are. Thank you so much.
Goodbye, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thanks, everybody.